So now, I am going to ask you a question and a very simple question at that. How many of you are into sales? Show of hands, sales. How many of you are into marketing? How many of you are doing both? Oh, welcome to real estate. So you know, sales and marketing go hand in hand. It's not inversely proportional, it's actually directly proportional. Jitna zyada marketing, utna zyada sales. Jitni zyada sales, utni zyada marketing. We thought, why not come up with our new concept? Aapme se TED Talks kaun kaun gaya? How many of you have attended any TEDx or TED Talks? Right? How many of you have seen it on YouTube? Right? You've seen? And they tell us about the journey. Hum kya better, better, behatar aur better mix ho gaya? But kya better kar sakte hain? Kaha behatar ban sakte hain? So we decided on having our own NEX because it's next gen. So the first session of the NEX is a special session and the topic that we are covering is fractional ownership. And to deliver that, ladies and gentlemen, please join me as I welcome to the stage the co-founder of Strata, Mr. Sudarshan Lodha.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Did you handle or put him off?
Anything was fine.
Any anything that you want. Can we have a handle for sir please? Yes, can we have a handle for sir?
Next, alright, okay. Okay, sure. Hi everyone, can you hear me? Okay. Till we probably figure out the logistics of the mic, we generally want to understand how many of you guys have actually heard about us or know what fractional real estate is as such. Quite surprising, only 10%. I was hoping we are doing a good job and I was hoping everybody in the audience would know. But gives us a good insight on what we've been doing and I would probably give you a little glimpse on how the space is evolving, what we are doing and how, what Mr. Runwal just mentioned that if you had the golden period of your year, the last two years, we also had the same golden period. But we feel disruption in technology is the next two ways in which future sales will continue to keep happening. All the points which they mentioned, whether it's the way ESG is going to be a very critical aspect or multiple other things from technology, the way you're going to give the experience to your customers before they buy any asset is what you know, we are trying to imbibe in what we are doing in a small way or a large way and we are trying to do what we're doing. So I'll just give you a little glimpse. How does it work? Do you have to present it? Okay. I'm sure all of you are from the real estate background itself, right? So we are the largest asset class which India buys every year. So it's a no brainer, India ko apne ko real estate beshne ki zarrot nahi hai. Everybody feels they know real estate. Whether or not they know any technicality of real estate itself, right? You may come and say, this is the floor space index, this is the kind of quality I'm giving. But they might not be aware, your customers eventually. But there's an inherent perception, the fact that they know what real estate is altogether, right? So this is what is India's wealth. Five trillion dollars of India's wealth today parked into gold diamond, which is obviously the darling asset class for most of it. Predominantly tier 2, tier 3, tier 4 markets where all the money is getting parked is only into gold and diamonds and silver as such. Then comes your FD bonds. Then is your residential real estate as an investment, not as an end use, right? So if you're going to stay in your own property that's not considered as an investment because your end use. However, if you bought anything beyond that, that's investment. Talking about 21%, that's a trillion dollars. A billion dollar is 7,000 crores. It takes 1,000 billion to make a trillion dollars. You can imagine how much of the wealth of India is parked into residential real estate, which can also be plot of lands etc. And then comes your equity, mutual funds etc., which I believe is still a very, very underpenetrated market as such. Like our equity market is 3 trillion whereas an American equity market is 28 trillion dollars right now, right? So that is the gap between what the depth of equity markets can also be in future. What we've realized in the entire thing, if you see the top 3 asset classes where 75% of the money is parked and you know, when we were starting thinking, konsa asset class pe focus karna chahiye, jisko democratize kar sakte hain, right? Democratization effectively means jahan capital or accessibility is the bigger challenge is what you know, is democratization. Like for instance, what your stock market is today is nothing but democratized way of you buying a share of a company altogether, right? Or today you have invites, which is a democratizing way where you can own roads. Also, otherwise, ek ek road project 1,000, 2,000 crore ka hota hai, ek ek aadmi khareed nahi pata hai, right? So democratization is the only way through which people can scale and have the ability to unlock different kind of capital which otherwise is not available or not accessible to these kind of asset classes altogether. So what we realize that people are investing into safe asset classes. This is the Indian mindset. Agar main aaj casino jata hu, ek crore leke, ek crore ka 2 crore kamaya. Human tendencies, 2 types, chal 2 crore ka 4 crore banate hain ya 1 crore jo main lege hai, pehle main jeb me dalta hu aur 1 crore se kehlet hai, right? Who jo jeb me dalte hai 1 crore, they want to start investing into 3rd asset classes because they like, chalo maine wealth create kar liya hai. But now I want to preserve my capital, that's very, very important. So all the, all our investors, right? Who made a killing in the stock market, were like, okay, I've invested 1 crore, I made 4 crores now. What do I do with the 4 crores, right? So in India, personal finance is the biggest problem right now because people have no idea where to deploy money after they made money, right? That's the biggest challenge. We have investors who are MDs of large banks, who have 8, 9 residential apartments in Bombay, making 2% return, 3% return whereas they sell to the world all sorts of exotic products saying 25% return, 20% or whatever. But when it comes to them, their wallet share of those exotic products is very, very small and they want to park a chunk of their money into real estate because they know their money is safe. The money is not subject to any stock market volatility, not subject to Russia having a war with Ukraine or whatever it is for that matter. They know for a fact that everything is as stable as itself, right? So this is why we realized that, how can we tap these 2 asset classes? Gold, I know, we can't tap anything. For us as Indians, gold is just a very different asset class and going into that is, you know, talking ill about any kind of religion in itself is what gold is altogether. So we realized, forget gold. Governments also been trying to monetize gold in different ways but has unsuccessful because gold is gold for Indians. But these 2 asset classes, which is FD and FD bonds and residential real estate is where we said that log aas thak gaye. Paisa laga laga ke in the same thing. They are looking for something new, they want to aspire to own something better or invest in something better and how do we give access to that is what we do at Strata, right? So we democratize commercial real estate. Owning a 1 BKC is always an aspiration to everyone. But can they afford it? It's sometimes not lifetime of savings. Kisi logon ki lifetime of earnings lag jaati hai just to own a floor of 1 BKC also, right? So the idea was, why only the ultra HNI and the large funds have the ability to invest? Why not even the smaller investors who can put in 25, 50 lakhs, who are not very, very small but have the aspiration to own or always aspired, kya yehi oversmack, main kam karto aur kash main yeh own kar sakta hu, is what you know, we are trying to bridge the gap. Like CRI, no brainer, the best 2 asset classes in terms of performance over the last decade. And you can witness that with the, with a clear thing that most of the international funds today, right? Whether it's Blackstone, GIC, Brookfield, whoever, they don't invest in residential at all. They only buy commercial properties because they know that is the investment asset class. Residential is not an investment asset class in India. And all these guys have burnt money by giving money to all these private equity funds jo structured finance karke 21%, 20% ka return kamaate. Because ideally, what they're doing is they're even choking the developer by charging such absurd money. What Mr. Runwal mentioned, there was this golden period, bante bante big jata tha, aaj bahut difficult ho gaya, right? So if you are, if it's not sold, your 21% will choke you and obviously your project would also get stuck. So this is where we felt, investors are looking at doing. But why are they not doing if it's really, really good, right? So one bigger problem was high access, high capital requirement. Let's say a floor of 1 BKC or the capital today is about 100, 150 crores. Like I said, it's lifetime savings, not even lifetime earnings required for one to own a floor of that and by that time, uski lifetime earnings 1500 crore tak aayegi, property 300 crore ki ho jayegi, right? With the inflation and urbanization altogether. Another bigger problem we've realized that real estate has always been a very local business, which means Bombay ka investor Bombay me paisa lagayega. Ya toh koi uska Delhi ya Bangalore ya Chennai ka koi friend hoga who says, you know, I'm investing, why don't you invest with me? That's the other herd mentality through which investments happen as such. But this is why we felt that today, when I showed you all the other asset classes as such, right? Whether it's gold, bonds, mutual funds, other alternative investments, everything today has been transitioned online. Where people are transacting gold online, people are buying stock online, people are buying bonds online, people are doing everything online. Even investing in startups for that matter are happening online. But unfortunately, real estate has not taken the online approach even now, right? It's still the touch and feel business. Ek property, I'm sure you sell, the same investor will bring 4 of his other friends in 4 different rounds, his relatives, dekho acha hai kya property, acha hai kya? Get acceptance from tak 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 from 4 people and only then deploy his capital as such. Because it's a very touch and feel business. And like I said, it's local because they're like, hey, I understand. Yeh market, main yeh property jaake dekh saktu hu rose and hence I would invest. I'm not going to invest in Goahati today, sitting in Bombay. Like I have no idea about Goahati laws, how it works, you know, what are the price benchmarking jo main khareed rahe hu, is it the right price etc. also at the same time. So that was another problem of inaccessibility itself, right? Today, I'm sitting in Bombay, main ko lag raha hai Bombay abhi mature ho gaya market, but Bangalore is a growth story. I want to invest in Bangalore, but today investor says, how do I even find a Bangalore property? How do I find the laws? How do I know yeh price main khareed rahe hu ke barav re keni? Then comes concentrated exposure. It's simple, an investor, if he has 40, 50 crores to deploy, would you want to invest in one property itself or do you want to diversify your investments, right? In investment world, thumb rule is diversify your investment. Bholte hain, ke pura ka pura EGF stock me paisa mat lago. Sab bank ke stock khareed logo, aapko banking sector bahut profit. Aapko lagta hai, ke it's a futuristic thing, right? So it's about diversification, but real estate unfortunately does not propose something like that in itself. So that's why we came and we realized that there is a need for investors to democratize and start owning real estate in commercial forms where they can make better rental returns than what they're making in residential. Today, people who can own commercial real estate are people as per income tax. Only about 8,000 families who declare an income of 5 crores and above. I'm sure the numbers is fudged, it's a lot more. There are a lot of people who make a lot more of the income and they don't declare. But having said that, going by the whole wide economy, this is the only audience who has the ability to buy, you know, your entire BKCs of the world, your entire outer ring roads of the world in Bangalore, your Gurgaon etc. etc. right? So and the larger audience who is making about 20 lakhs to about 5 crores a year or about 15, 16 lakh people in India. So in total, all of us are chasing these people to buy our properties, right? That's it. Yehi aapki India ki TGI hai, aapko 25, 30 lakh logi hai jo aap affordability kar sakte hain. Maybe a 20% growth here on here because salary expectation of people will go up. Where probably a 10 lakh rupee guy was now taking a hike and got a 20 lakh rupee salary. But this is all the 1 crore, 2 crore which Mr. Runwal is spending is going only after chasing these 20, 30 lakh people in India as such, right? Who have the ability to own these large assets in itself. I'm discarding the cash buyers, that's a different market in itself, but going by what it is, right? So the idea was, can I make 18 lakh people compete with 7,000 people, right? That is the bigger picture, right? Because today, when it comes to a 50 crore rupee investment, the guy is going to take at least a month or 2 months to decide. He's going to take at least 3 to 4 months to get his liquidity out because obviously 50 crores not going to be sitting in his bank account. So he's going to take some time to liquidate and so it's technically you're talking about a 4 to 6 months kind of a window when a property gets acquired. But at the same time, for an investor today who has to take a call of 25, 50 lakh, for him it's a 1 minute or a 1 day call or at max a 1 week call, whether he wants to do it or not, right? And there's somebody who is taking care of everything as a company, what we do, handle everything professionally for them, is why we felt that the decision-making ability and the deployment capability is going to be 10x more faster than them. And that's what has been our biggest edge on how we've been able to acquire our properties per se. This is the commercial real estate market in itself, right? Assets above 100 million, let's say the entire 1 BKC or Blackstone has the ability to sign a 3,000 crore cheque and buy it one shot. But assets from 3 million to 100 million, which is about, let's say 25, 30 crore say 300 crore tak ka asset. So 30 to 300, the buyers are very limited and they are time-taking and more importantly, these are egoistic buyers. They come with opportunity, they like, agar main 50 crore ya 100 crore dal raha hu to main ko maal sabse sasta chahiye. Main ko chahiye 10% ka return every year, bana main paisa nahi lagaunga. They forget the fact that the guy who is also selling a 50, 100 crore is also as egoistic as you and he, this is not the only investment he is made, right? So he's not going to sell if it's very, very cheap as well. So transactions in this segment is what we realized and we said, yaar, isi ko hum focus karenge aur isi ke peechey hum grosenge, right? So 20 to 300 crores is the sweetest spot for us where we feel that we have honestly no competition because I can sign a cheque in 30 days whereas an ultra HNI is going to sign a cheque in about 3 to 6 months, like I said, right? So that is the ability, because a seller who is wanting to sell a property, he needs money as of yesterday. He's not planning to, ke main ko 6 maine bad paisa chahiye to main aaj property beshna chalu karunga, right? It's always somebody who sells property which is very dear to them is only when they're in need of real funds or they see another brilliant opportunity and they say, let me diversify by liquidating this and investing into a higher growth opportunity also altogether. And then the smaller ticket size, which is up to 20 crores, there's enough and more people, I mean, in, in, who and banner itself will pick up at least 1,000, 2,000 crores with a stock every year with the kind of money these guys make by leveraging it or whatever it is for that matter. So we also realized that the whole fund business in India, what Unitech, Piramal, all these funds have really not performed well. Majority of our investors' confidence has gone because who blind pool hota tha. Fund paisa le raha tha, investors ko idea bhi nahi, paisa kaha ja raha hai? 10 saal bad maulum padta hai, ke maine toh paisa kamaya nahi. People are like, main FD me rakh leta tha, I would have made 2 times the money in 10 years for that matter, right? But this is where we felt that today investors want to know where their money is going. They want to know the price at which they're buying, they want to know, okay, is this the market price? And they want a hell lot of transparency and that is one of the biggest thing which I believe as a, in this whole event, which I'm sure many of the others who also keep talking about is, how do we bring in more transparency into the system? Because that is what is affecting decision-making in a large way and which is not contributing to your sales at the same time, right? They're convinced, but then they're still in doubts on multiple other things. Apart from all the other parameters of, you know, completion of project on time etc., that's a different thing. But transparency is a very, very big thing which people want to know. I have NRA investors on our platform today who say, maine same property 10,000 me khareed di thi aur usi developer ne 8,000 me yahan Bombay market me bhecha. Right? Because again, the developer has to recover the cost of, you know, all the international expenses he has. But then an NRA investor feels cheated because he's not getting an MRP price which real estate honestly does not have in itself, right? So what we do is, we float a company to buy every property because that's what every fund also does. So we are ideally democratizing the whole fund business in India in a large way for smaller asset classes in the segment which we are catering to. And saying, kyaar, we will float a company to buy every property. Investors invest into a common escrow account and then we move the money into SPV and the SPV goes and buys the property. Now this way, investors can track who my other co-investors are. Investors can track the bank statements of the SPV. Investors can track everything through our platform is what we've created and we've been able to establish that trust, confidence and that ease of business of investment in itself for investors as such. So the approach is very simple. Investors today invest into a, into, onto a platform by doing a KYC, which is what every other platform is also operating. There are about 30 companies right now in the market. Investors get units of that particular property, they earn monthly out of it and we help them liquidate the property and manage the entire investment on their behalf. So this is what net-net is the entire story, how the entire process works. It's completely online. This was the biggest challenge which we wanted to take on board. We're very proud of what Ola did 10 years back by bringing a whole customer behavioral change in customers by saying, aap ghar bheto, driver bahar aayega aapke aur aapko drop karega. You don't have to turn key left low, right low etc. etc. right? This is what we wanted to do, that today when gold can be bought online etc. Let's bring a customer behavioral change by buying real estate online as well. And today, which we are very proud of, is we've transacted close to about 680 crores today on our platform. It's just been 18 to 24 months since we've been operational. But we haven't even met 95 to 97% of our investors till date, right? Because obviously, we built our entire business in the pandemic, so there's no question that they could come and meet us also. And also at the same time, what is very, something we again, we are very proud of is, 95 to 98% of them haven't even seen the properties they've invested. So that whole emotional emotion of real estate, that touch and feel of real estate has been removed in a large way and that is what we're trying to create. Like we bought our property in Hyderabad, which was leased to Swiss bank. It was a 44 crore investment. Obviously, going by Hyderabad, you'll expect that most of the money would come from Hyderabad. Out of 44 crores, we had only 1 crore from Hyderabad and 43 crores came from every other part of the world in India but from Hyderabad, right? So in true sense, different money is coming into different markets where they feel there's a good growth trajectory in that kind of thing and want to own these kind of assets which they've been hungry to own. We have investors from Satna, from Kanyakumari, from Tirpur, always aspire to own assets in these markets but have never got the ability to do it purely because of inaccessibility, high capital requirement etc. etc. also at the same time. Just how we select properties is very important, we just don't onboard anything. See again, we as a platform are working for developers and saying, hey, I have created a platform which gives you access to accredited 40,000 investors who are there on my platform today, who are wanting to buy good grade A commercial real estate, lease to good grade A clients. Aap acha quality maal banao, main aapko pura ka pura maal khareed sakta hu, right? So we are trying to do developer partnerships and saying that, hey, I'll be your swiggy, you be the restaurant. I'll create as much as demand you want, pan India for you. All you do is just make quality food and I will ensure everything of you, whatever your build is sold out also at the same time, right? So that's what we do instead of you haggling around finding an HNI who will buy your entire asset or whatever is where we come in. Even funds for that matter, large funds take usually about 6 to 12 months to acquire even 100 to 100 crore property. That's where our ability comes to take decisions fast because again, it's a very agile and nimble company so we can take decisions and we don't have bureaucracy also at the same time. So we do property screening, understand what is a micro market, data, what are the leases going in the micro market to get us some benchmarking on the price. Very important, our investors always look for, at least, and I'm sure even you guys if you're investing in commercial, kya tenant kaun hai, kitna lock in hai, kitna lease hai? So that's also very important, what are the returns they generated? We tell our developers with whom we work, they come and say, no, I want to sell at, you know, 7%, 7.5%. I'm like, see, you want money in 10, 15 days, give investor value, he'll give you value back, right? He'll come back to you and keep investing instead of squeezing him out and trying to extract the maximum. So we are saying, okay, give at 8, 8.25, 8.5. Investors would be very happy because they're getting at a good price and they'll come and keep backing you for every project in future because you're just talking about 25, 50 lakh from per investor and that's the money he makes every month anyway, right? So that is what we're trying to do and trying to educate developers also that, let's create this partnership and try to scale this up more. One thing which you've seen why embassy is scaled is because Blackstone supported them to thick and thin and kept saying, I'll keep buying everything and I'll keep backing you for everything you do. That's what Strata is doing, we are trying to be the next, or we are trying to create the next embassy by being the Blackstone for them, right? So we're saying, aap ek kam karo jo aapka kam hai, main mera kam karta rata hu. So money and financing is the only thing you should not be worried about. I'll handle all that. You focus on just ensuring quality development and quality leasing happens also at the same time. So we've created an amazing dashboard for investors where they can track all the investments, all the property documents, property tax, insurance documents, everything which goes in the property which keeps happening as a cycle, keeps getting updated on the dashboard. We have now a mobile application as well where everything can happen on mobile as well. To an extent where we believe customer service and customer engagement is very important. Today, we've even integrated WhatsApp that today an investor can be in Bahamas or Maldives enjoying a holiday, can invest through our application, his 25, 50 lakh, what he's looking at investing and start owning a piece of commercial real estate in no time, right? So that is the advancement of technology by building transparency, by leveraging tech in a large way, giving access to data and making investors, you know, be confident about investing. And it's been about, like I said, it's just been about 18 to 24 months. What Mr. Runwal mentioned that, okay, if you've done good sale, it's your golden period, but that's not going to happen. We, we also know, we've done 650 crores, but if the recession, what is being said is going to come, the looming recession, I feel it's going to be the best time of our lives for us purely because investors during recession only invest into 2 products. They invest into fixed income products like bonds and fixed deposits and they invest in real estate. And they want something jahan monthly return milta raha hai. Obviously, residential real estate is also very, very large opportunity. But if the looming recession is going to happen, people are going to wanting to park and deploy money into safer asset classes. Now obviously, the, the rate of interest is going to be a deterrent for certain people but there's still always a large market who's always wanting to buy because they make that kind of salaries also at the same time. So whole dashboard which allows, we obviously have built a large partner platform as well which allows a lot of our partners to come on board, to offer. So most of them is wealth management kind of clients and real estate people, realtors who work with us. What we've taken as our biggest, you know, motivation is China for us, right? So we look up to China in a large way because they've changed the whole real estate scene in the last decade in a large way apart from all the bad things they've done. But real estate has been something which has done fantastically well. In the commercial real estate space in China, 80% of Chinese money which goes into CRI is domestic. And it has been created as a wealth management product by most of the financial advisory services and have been sold at, in India rupees, 10, 15 lakh se leke, ek, 2 crore, 5 crore takka. Unko maal bhej bhej ke, 80% of that money has been domestic money whereas only 20% of the money is foreign money. In India, it's VC Versa, it's 80% foreign money and 20% domestic money. And what is our domestic money doing? Every year buying residential real estate for 2%, 3% return as such, right? So not that we are discarding the fact that residence is not a large market but commercial is a large market where these investors are tired of owning more than 2, 3, 4 apartments and are looking at something new, which gives you as investors an opportunity because today even retail, commercial etc. is a large opportunity and you're not looking into it in a large way is purely because you feel it's only the big boy play, only Hiranandani sir can do it. Trust me, even if you can build a 1, 2 lakh square feet and you have that kind of confidence that, hey, once I lease, I have financial backing, that is the biggest edge in which you can compete with the big boys also in a large way. Just a whole lot of dashboard which we have. So we tell our investors very clear that this is a 5, 7 year kind of an investment mindset. If you don't have that kind of mindset, this is not a product for you. The returns we generate for investors range from 8 to 12% as such. And like I said, the minimum is 25 lakhs for certain, for all investors. For women, we've just started bringing it to 15 lakhs to again, open a large demand pool which we believe will be a large thing altogether. So that's what we are doing as of now. Just about us, so we have close to 2 and a half million square feet under management already. We feel we have done a great job in terms of what we have done. But also at the same time, I feel in the whole CRI segment, Sadih Chisok Road is probably half a building of, not even half a building, probably 4, 5 floors of the capital building in BKC in itself, right? So there is a large market and it obviously works where we do partnerships with developers and continue creating more because what we've realized, when we did 140 crore asset in a month, in 21 days, we raised 141 crores and we registered on the 22nd days, we realized that there is enough and more capital waiting to be deployed in real estate in itself, especially CRI. But are now looking at something more than just residential also at the same time. So these are just our tenants which we have close to 650 crores deployed. We've been funded by 4 large venture capitalist fund. Elevation, one of the initial investors of Prop Tiger, Swiggy, Make My Trip, Meeshu etc. has been a core believer of what we're doing because what we're doing in the US is already a 20 billion dollar industry. There are large players managing 6, 7 billion dollars in, in last 6 years itself. So definitely, India has a larger opportunity as well. Unlike US, which is not a developed economy, we're a developing, which means sirf 50% asset ban chuke hai, 50% asset banne baaki hai. That's where we're trying to fill that gap, work with developers and ensure that they get the best value of their investments which they are making and they derisk themselves by having a financial backer who's ready to underwrite what they are buying as well. Kotak Investment Advisors, one of the largest private equity real estate funds in India. Mayfield and Guruhas, Guruhas is Zirodas entity which is a stockbroking in India as such. That's it, that's quickly about us, we're running short of time unfortunately. Can we, can we take questions?
Is there any questions that you have? Please upgrade. Are you transparent, are you with the profit that you make with the sales process with your investors?
Yeah, so even the term sheet.
Check. Yeah. So if you could please repeat that question.
When you're making any sale, there will be some amount of transparency that is required.
Yeah.
So between your actual sale value versus the one that is disclosed to your investors. Is it pro-rata, profit sharing?
So, so we are a fund management business, so in that way we charge a 3% upfront as an acquisition. We charge 1% every year as management fee, which is fixed, top kar rent, barata rehga, humara fee same rehga. So mota moti, it becomes 7% of the rents which you're achieving is the management fee. This is something which all investors are very happy purely because all the hassle of lease negotiation, property tax, this sub, it's nothing at the end of the day for what they're paying. And we take a performance fee when they exit. So if we are giving you a better value return for investment to do. So I'm not bothered of making by saying, ke main 100 crore me khareeta hu, 105 me bhesta hu. Because I know by doing this, I would rather lose the bigger picture of what we're trying to achieve over here, right? Like today, Blackstone has 700 billion dollars worth of capital. 1% of that is 7 billion dollars which they make every year as just fees, right? So we're very happy doing what this is instead of going after a small thing as such. So in terms of transparency, we're very happy to share the term sheet which we sign as well because we're not in the business of arbitrage play, we're more in the business of creating that trust and confidence which people do. For, for going with the way the session for the days on sales and marketing, right? People might ask, okay, how are you doing this, right? So, we realized that webinars are a very, very strong tool, and the power of network is a very, very strong tool, which you should leverage on. Hence, our partners are our biggest edge. We have close to about four, five thousand partners today on our platform. But also, at the same time, webinars, right? So, we've done webinars in local languages as well for people educating, because right now, we're in the education phase, we're not in the real estate business right now, because we're educating people के तुम real estate online खरीद सकते हो. Our first two assets, what problems we had was people thought we are a Ponzi scheme, कोई MLM चल रहा है, कोई पैसा लेके भाग जाएगा, whatever, etc. But you know, that's what, we've crossed that phase, but still, like I said, even in this, who you would love to partner, we would love to partner with, are not even aware of it, right? So, it's still in that education phase, where we're trying to do, even on the seller's side, seller like, तू एक सौ चालीस करोड़ बोल सकता है, underwrite कर सकता है, but मेरे को पता था, तेरे पास जेब में पैसे हैं कि नहीं, right? So, but we've proven, we've done that, and you know, we've been successfully trying to acquire more and more.
Yeah, so Darshan, are you what, registered with SEBI, RBI, which?
So, right now, there are no regulators on the SEBI front as such, which is regulating this space. Across the world, it's a regulated space. However, we are rarely registered as brokers in all the states where we operate right now, to ensure that is there. We have certain clearances from regulators that we don't come under the ambit of certain.
Who are the regulators?
There's no regulator as of now for India. See, India as a country, we've always been very reactive and not proactive. Even Dubai government today has regulation around this, which is not even in the world market. Till date, if you're buying medicines online, there are no laws for buying medicine online. It's technically illegal in itself, right?